I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners staff meeting of October the 1st. Welcome everyone in here.
And I'd like to introduce, have everybody introduce themselves up on the DS.
I'm Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
County Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Jeffaludo County Administrator.
Mike Freeman, Louisville County Attorney.
Thank you so much. Want everybody to see who's working so hard for you in the county. Our communications person is out there, Bridget Doherty. She's hiding in the crowd. But I'm Stephanie Summerold-Dumas, President of the Hamilton County Commission. And we will move forward because we have some important items on our agenda for today. I would also like to say anybody who's watching who thought that the port would be presenting a report today, they will not be presenting a report today, but will in the forthcoming weeks, or within our next two meetings. So our first item on the agenda is a comprehensive report on COVID-19. And we have a fill-in today for our County Commissioner, Health Commissioner. How are you today?
Thank you for having me. Commissioner Kesterman sends his regrets and I will try to live up to his lofty standards.
Certainly.
The first slide.
Let's say I want you to introduce yourself.
Okay, my name is Mike Sammon. I'm Public Information Officer with Hamilton County Public Health.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the first slide that we have, and this is following Greg's typical presentation format, is the number of cases, and this is cumulative over the course of the epidemic. What I wanted to point out very quickly on this slide is that we were, there's about 8,500 active cases in the county as of last week. We're down to 7,500 active cases this week. So things are starting to move in a good direction. I'm guardedly optimistic and you'll, we'll take this roller coaster ride here for the rest of the slides. And our daily case rate, if you look at this, this looks like King's Island in terms of roller coasters, but at the peak of our epidemic, which was in last January, we were doing about 700 cases a day. We got very happy here in the middle of this summer. As you can see, we were down to 13 cases a day. And right now, we're back up to about 240. And again, down from last week, we were at 299 last week. So again, directionally, in the right direction. This is our positivity rate for the county. Again, something we look at, it's very important. And we're just at about point three, I'm sorry, 9.3%, much higher than we'd like it to be. But again, as you can see on the line, starting to go down. So our optimism continues. Our reproductive values, and I know most of us have been through this, but again, very quickly, the R factor that we track is what looks at the transmissibility of COVID. What we like to say is that if the R value is below one, there is less chance of transmission. And right now, in Hamilton County, we are at about point nine. For the 14-county region, we're at about point nine-two. And again, looking at the two bottom charts, once again, the roller coaster is going the right direction with decreased daily moving averages of cases. Same is true with our hospitalizations. Again, if you look at the left side of this chart, you'll see what it looked like at the peak of the epidemic. If you look where we are now, again, we had a nice drop in the middle of the summer. But if you look where we are today, we're at about 475 people in the hospital. We have 140 in our intensive care units, of which 113 are on ventilators. So again, more, way more than we'd like to see, but again, dropping a bit. And that leads into hospital admissions. This is an interesting slide because as we can see very quickly, this has since early on been a pandemic of the elderly by and large. But if you look, we're starting to get younger here. We're starting to see 40 to 49 group be admitted to the hospital, as well as the 30 to 39 group. And that's, that's not a good trend. That's, that's vaccination preventable. And we'd like to see that group very quickly step up and improve. This is the chart that the CDC puts out every week. It's the level of community transmission. As you can see, the entire state has been labeled as a high transmission state. And again, CDC puts that out based on the number of cases and the percent positivity rates. We'd like to see that one come way down, but again, we're no different than the entire state. We get into vaccinations and there's some good news and some bad news. Those who are eligible for vaccination, i.e. those who are 12 years of age and older, we're at 70%, which is good. We'd like to be at 80, but we're at 70% for those who are eligible for vaccine. I just wanted to point out real quickly that vaccination now is offered at more than 200 sites throughout the county. There is nobody in Hamilton County that is more than a 10-minute drive from a vaccine site. They're accessible, they're free, they're easy. You can walk up, right in front of our office today is a tent. You can walk up anytime and get vaccinated with no wait. This is our vaccination by age and back to where we were before. But again, if you look at, on the left side of the chart, those 70 to 80-plus are knocking it out of the park in terms of being vaccinated. We're catching up in the 50 to 59 group. It's the young folks. And again, not everybody in those groups is eligible for vaccine, but there's some good news on the horizon in terms of increasing vaccination rates for those in younger groups. Which leads to this one. Big week here for those of us in public health and in the, in the medicine business. But this week, Moderna will be presenting to the FDA on its booster. The data is in and they're ready to hopefully boost us, those of us who've had Moderna. The following day, same discussion for the Janssen or the J&amp;J vaccine as we've known it. Interestingly, just as I was leaving the office today, we haven't had J&amp;J in this county for quite some time. And we just, this morning, got a pretty good-sized load. So we'll be putting out that information for those who are interested in the one shots versus a series of two shots, which the other two require. And then last but not least, on October 26th, the FDA is going to get together to review its Pfizer vaccination requirements for children five to 11. It will be, if approved, and we're very optimistic that it will be, this will be an emergency use authorization, similar to the way the vaccines rolled out initially. And once we can start getting that group vaccinated, we'll really be able to start making some progress, especially as it relates to that younger group. And last but not least, not to beat the horse again, but vaccine and testing is available throughout the county. There is, nobody lives more than 10 minutes from a vaccine or a test. Urge everybody to take advantage. Happy to take questions?
Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
I will open it up for any questions or comments from my colleagues. Vice President Reese.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. Wanted to ask you about the, there's been a lot reported about the Delta variant. And the report is saying that it's not as strong or either, you know, it's winning out. Can you, have you gotten anything from this?
We, what we do know is the Delta variant is overwhelmingly what is affecting us right now. It is two to three times more transmissible than the original strain of COVID was. And it's pretty virulent. It's, it's the reason for the big peaks and the roller coaster right after the summer lull. So is it stronger? Debatable, and I think the jury's still out, but certainly more transmissible.
No, I was, and we've been giving that information out, but I heard on the news this morning, and I just didn't know if, you know, there's a lot out there. And I don't want to be putting out the wrong information. But it was on the news about that there was some reports that the variant was not as strong right now. So I didn't know if the CDC had contacted you guys with any information.
Yeah, we haven't heard that one yet. And I'm not saying it wasn't out there, but I haven't come across that one yet, so.
Okay.
I know that that's what we're seeing throughout Hamilton County, as well as literally the rest of the state, so.
Gotcha, okay. So that's not correct. We probably want to just make sure we have something on our website because people are hearing things. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about, just wanted to, I just mentioned, first of all, thank you all for all the work that you're doing and everyone who is fighting this. I wanted to just say that our mobile units are out there and they are giving out the free COVID testing kits for free of charge with the mobile unit. So it's been a big hit. People listen to Commissioner, Health Commissioner Kesterman, and people are picking them up. And wanted to also say that the 513 relief bus was out in Camp Washington today and got a chance, people were lined up before the bus pulled up. And just want to thank the Camp Washington Urban Revitalization Team. And Ms. Bloom will appreciate that group that does redevelopment. But that's one of the zip codes that we needed more people taking the shot. So we still are giving out the $100. I just want to put that out there. That is still available for the first shot. And tomorrow, I believe it's tomorrow, we head to Harrison and Cleaves. So we're going into these, going into different areas and just want to just remind people to do that. My last question is the flu shot, because we're getting flu season now. So people having questions about that and taking the booster. Is there any new information for, regarding to that?
Science says that it is perfectly safe to take both simultaneously. I had my flu shot this morning, so hopefully we see a mild flu season. Chances are very good we'll see a very active flu season this year. So flu shots and COVID shots are fine simultaneously, no scientific problem at all. To your point, and for everybody here, this is the test kit that's being given out. These are available at the Hamilton County Public Libraries, as well as on the relief bus. They're a rapid test, so you'll have your results in 15 minutes. And they're free, so we encourage people who need them to please make use.
Yeah, they're a hot commodity.
Yes, they are.
And lastly, I know I said the other one was lastly, but the children, because you put on there, we're also partnering with schools that invite us. I know we're with Norwood Schools and we are with North College Hill Schools. But there's other schools the Health Department is partnering with when the schools are inviting them to come and provide.
We have quite a list lined up of schools who are running vaccine clinics the minute that that's approved. So good sign. We'll take all we can get.
Thank you, Commissioner Strehouse.
Thank you. And thank you for holding up the test kit. The libraries have said that they've got plenty of those. A couple of weeks ago, they had run out.
Yep.
And so now they're getting fully stocked by ODH.
They are.
And so they've got, and it's at the drive-through locations, I think there are eight of them throughout the county. I don't remember all of them off the top of my head, but the main library is the most active one.
The libraries are asking that we call in advance to make sure that they're there, but they're well-stocked. I know they just received a pretty sizable allocation.
Right, thank you. And I wanted to just refer back to the one slide that you had with all the locations where you can get the vaccine and get, yeah, so that's striking. And I know you always show that, or rather Greg always shows it, but it's striking how many options there are. In addition to the efforts with the relief bus, with the mobile units for public health, we have all these stationary units as well. Can you elaborate just a little bit? Because those are a variety of kinds of locations.
Sure.
So can you help us better understand what that illustrates?
So these can be anything from a Kroger, a CVS, a Walgreens, you know, any of these places that are able to administer vaccination and/or testing. So they also include our locations, the City of Cincinnati's locations, as well as some of the mobile locations as we move them around, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. And once again, we thank you for all your work. We'll continue to do the things that we do until we find out something different that we can do to make the numbers go even farther down, so. And I will let Commissioner Kesterman know how good you did today.
Well, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Much appreciated.
Madam President, if I could just very quickly, while we have Mike here, I had a chance to stop out to the Sharonville Convention Center this weekend and to stop out to the vaccine clinic going on out there. Folks doing a fantastic job as always. I think it was John, maybe from your office?
Yep.
Who is, who is out there doing a great job. Professional, friendly. So just want to, we've, Commissioner Reese mentioned the places where we have our mobile units as well. So a lot, lot of different options for the public if you're looking for the vaccine, it's out there.
Absolutely. And I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we will move forward because we have some very important people here to discuss another issue, which is our, Hamilton County's Pilot Housing Action Plan. And who is going to start the discussion? Hello?
Hi, good afternoon Commissioners. I'm Emily Carnahan, interim key development administrator. So I'm going to just do a brief introduction. We do have several speakers who, you know, are all, you know, quite involved with this and know a lot more specifics than I do. So just do a brief introduction as to what this is, how we got here. So as you can see, we have Kristen Baker from LISC and Liz Bloom here from the Community Building Institute. So last year, Community Development went out with a request for proposals for a consultant to.
And we'll ask if you could speak up just a little because our interpreters are having a little difficulty.
Sure, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. So last year, in 2020, we went out for a request for proposals for housing action plans. And this came about because in our work with our Community Development Block Grant and our home grant, working with the communities, you know, we discovered there's, there's a bit of a gap in several communities about, you know, really understanding what they need and how to get there. So we wanted to help them with that. So we had an RFP and LISC and CBI were chosen to be our consultants on this. So they do all the data collection, the interviewing, work with the communities on recommendations as to, you know, how they can accomplish some of their goals related to housing. So, and then you can see, we'll also hear from Mayor Smith and Tom Carroll from the Village of Silverton. Unfortunately, Mayor Lisa Mira from Addison was unable to come after all. But, so just really quickly, this round that we're, that we just completed was for five jurisdictions. We did this as sort of a pilot program. So a few communities just sort of raised their hand and were like, you know, we'll, we'll try this out. So those were Addison, Cheviot, Deer Park, Silverton, and Norwood. And just today, we released our next round because it's been such a success so far. So that'll be for an additional seven in some of our participating jurisdictions. So that application went out to them today, to mostly the administrators and some of the mayors. And the application will be due October 22nd. They can call our Community Development Office or look on our website for more information on that. But today, we're going over sort of what each of these action plans contains. So just briefly, some of the overall objectives are, just, okay. So some of our objectives, you can see on the PowerPoint, we really want to, like I mentioned earlier, support our communities and especially ones that want to be proactive, especially around housing. So as you can see, like I mentioned, we have the five pilot partners. And this also sort of came about from the larger Housing Our Future effort that LISC and the Greater Cincinnati Foundation spearheaded. So it sort of takes a lot of that framework and does a deeper dive. So you can see it has a greater focus on the specific people and the places in each community, their systems. Like as I mentioned, LISC and CBI conducted interviews and did quite, quite extensive research. I also, as I mentioned, we wanted to kind of figure out how the county can support the jurisdictions a bit more, you know, and specifically in our department for our block grant home, but, but really as a whole. And that took on a larger meeting, meaning, since we started this right before the pandemic. And so this is sort of been going on all throughout that. And obviously, you know, we have CARES funding, we have these, the American Rescue Plan, the stakeholder meetings that are happening. So this is really, all ties together really well with what the county is trying to do. So we, and it focuses on, you know, what the jurisdictions can actually do, what their goals are and how they can get there. So next, I'm going to turn it over to Kristen Baker from LISC, and she's going to talk a little bit more about the specifics of the data, how it ties to Housing Our Future. Welcome, Nick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Good afternoon Commissioners. I'm happy to be with you today in person to talk a little bit about what we've learned around these strategies in terms of what are the current trends in the market in each of these places? There are similarities and there are differences. And there are, I think, a lot of important items that we can share together and learn from that apply all around our community. So we know, and this is not news to anyone, that we have a really tight housing market in Hamilton County right now, and in our region, in the broader MSA. We're not producing new units at the rate that we need. We have, sales are going quick. You know, we're starting to see that trend down a little bit. I think properties are actually sitting on the MLS a little longer than they were a few months ago. But still, it is really difficult to purchase a home right now in this community, particularly in certain price points, especially those that are more affordable to our, our median income here in the region. We also have, we know that black homeowners in particular face additional challenges that really make becoming homeowners, maintaining homeownership, and increasing, you know, household wealth through homeownership is really an important attention piece that I think all of these jurisdictions recognized through the work that we did with them. So we want to make sure that we don't leave the impression that we're going to solve all of the problems, right, in each of these five places with, these are all complex and interconnected issues. But we think, we, we think that by understanding what the challenges are, we will be able to create solutions together that can hopefully mitigate some of these challenges. The market is, again, we're seeing a huge appreciation in home values around the community, around the county. And, and that's certainly not a bad thing in many regards, but if it happens too quickly, if it impacts people's ability to stay in their homes, to maintain, to purchase, that is where we start to think about how do we correct for that a little bit. And also rental prices are going up as well. We know, we know that the median two-bedroom apartment in our community now is around $832, which does not really align with the wages that we see. And I'm, I'm jumping ahead, but we'll get there. We know too, that we just don't have a lot of affordable options. And when I say affordable, we're not talking necessarily about capital A, affordable, you know, publicly subsidized. We're just saying things that are priced right, again, for the wages that people are making in their families. And that is across the region too. That is not just unique to Hamilton County. Also, the market is changing in our urban core and in, also in many of our communities outside of that. And how do we sort of understand what that impact means for our communities in the first string suburbs and in, more broadly, in Hamilton County? So top-level data. So again, this is, we've, I think we showed you this slide maybe a few months ago when we were here previewing some of this. But just as a reminder, we know that 30% of Hamilton County households are cost-burdened. And when we say cost-burdened, that is, that means that folks are spending more than 30% of their monthly income on their housing expenses. So that's not just your mortgage, that's your water, your utilities, et cetera, et cetera. And renters are typically most likely to be cost-burdened. You can see those figures here, that 45% of our renters in Hamilton County are cost-burdened. That's a pretty significant figure. What that really means is that if you have one crisis, you need new tires on your car, or your kids have a big school expense, or there's a, you know, a crisis, that people are really going to be much more challenged financially if they're expending a significant amount of their monthly income on their housing costs. Most of the folks that are cost-burdened are under the age of 65. You can see here, almost three-quarters are under the age of 65. And almost all of these households are making less than $50,000 a year. And I think that's important because we talk about the percentages a lot, and you know, you all know what that means, but the average citizen doesn't really understand what that equates to always. So if, when you say that 46% of our cost-burdened homeowners make between $20,000 and $50,000, that really makes it real, right? Because those are jobs that we know are really important in our region to keep us going. They're the folks that have kept us afloat during the pandemic, the essential workers, the people going out and working in the service and medical industries, et cetera. So I think that's important to really understand, who are we talking about here? Who is impacted? So the, when you, when you talk about it in real figures, 102, over 102,000 households in Hamilton County are considered cost-burdened, and 49,000 of those are severely cost-burdened. And what that means is more than 50% of their monthly income is going towards housing costs. So for the communities we worked with, you can see here that we do have, all of them have a significant percentage of residents that are experiencing cost-burden. And a good number of them, Silverton in particular, who happened to be with us today, have the highest percentage showing here of households that are severely cost-burdened. So again, just, just important context as we think about solutions. This map, I think, is a good way to visualize where we're talking about. So where are these households that have incomes of less than $25,000 a year? And just as a reminder, this is a little dated, but back in December, we knew that 20,000 of these households were very likely to be behind on their rent and mortgage. So now when we think about the eviction moratorium being lifted and the fact that, you know, folks were sort of resuming some level of normalcy and some of the safety measures that were in place to protect households are starting to fall away, what, what are we going to see long-term in terms of trends? So we talked about price a little bit here. Median home sales have almost doubled in Norwood, Silverton, and Cheviot. And so you can see this, this chart line is really demonstrating that, that now we have moved up to, you know, almost $180,000 is the median sale price in those three communities in particular, which is significant. That's a significant jump just since 2014. So that makes homeownership less attainable, frankly, right? Especially for folks making around $50,000 a year.
Sure.
We asked questions, I don't want to get off, could you go back to the previous slide? So I'm struck by the Addison line.
Yeah.
What's going on with Addison?
Well, I'll look, Liz knows Addison best. Should talk a little bit about that when she comes up. But we, Addison is, did you want to come up here? Sorry. Addison is a little bit of a different case, right? Because one, I think that they, where they're located in the county, right, it's not quite as accessible as some other parts. And Liz?
Yeah, it is kind of stark. Addison is a small community. That doesn't, that represents significantly less home sales than some of the others. I think the, the 2020 number is only about six home sales. So because they're a small community, the, the data swings numbers a lot. The other thing I will say about Addison is they have some property maintenance issues they have to contend with, and there are some infrastructure issues. There are some road conditions and water line conditions that they're going to have to contend with. And that's part of our findings for Addison.
Thank you. So I hope that you have seen the Chamber's Embracing Growth Report that they produced about six weeks ago and rolled out. So we have been working closely with Cincinnati USA Regional Chamber in that Housing Our Future started. And we asked them to come alongside and, you know, bring the business community into this conversation around housing. And I think they felt that they wanted to also draw a slightly bigger circle around. Our, our domain is considered Hamilton County. They looked at the full MSA. So they presented some new data points that are more from a regional perspective that I think are helpful to understand. But what this, this particular piece of data, I think, is just important for us to center on. And that is that housing costs, the blue and purple line, both rent and home values have gone up pretty significantly, and wages are flat essentially, I mean, slightly up from flat. So we have to reconcile that. You can't, we cannot put more, we have to put a little more effort, I think, into understanding how we can increase wages to keep pace. And also, how do we present tools to residents to make sure that they're able to maintain their home, to get into home purchase, to have rent that's affordable, et cetera? We have to tend to both things at once. The last sort of piece I want to flag for you all, and I noted that the port will be The last sort of piece I want to flag for you all, and I noted that the Port will be here in a few weeks to speak with you, and they've done a little bit of digging on this, and I think it's important for us to understand even more deeply the role of, in this slide, we're talking about real estate investment trusts, but we're also talking about sort of institutional buyers and the role they're playing in the market. You know, companies are purchasing homes, single-family homes in our community, and some are holding them and renting them out, which is what a REIT will do. And others are turning them more quickly in the market for profit purposes. But how do we manage that in a community where home sales are going so quickly? How does the average citizen get into purchasing a home if it gets scooped up off the market before we can really even get folks to be able to move forward with purchasing it? So I would encourage you to ask the Port a little bit about that too, next, at the next meeting or when they arrive. I know they're talking about some other topics as well, but they've been really digging into this data. And I think it's important to understand what role institutions are playing in the home sale market right now. In Cheviot, we saw almost 10% decrease in homeownership rates just because of one real estate investment trust purchasing homes in that community and renting them out. So it's just something to be aware of. Okay. And I think, one last slide for me, which is connecting back to Housing Our Future. So Housing Our Future is really focused on three things: producing and preserving more affordable housing, protecting our vulnerable residents, we know senior citizens, in particular, our population that we see in many of our jurisdictions. And we want to make sure they're supported in their housing needs. And also changing, influencing some of the systems that are affecting our ability to access housing and our capacity to create some of the change and the goals that folks want to see. Everyone wants a place to live that is safe and affordable and in the community they want to be in. And I want to commend these first few jurisdictions for stepping forward and saying, we want to understand better what we need to do to help the residents that are in our community now. So Liz is going to talk with us now about what we are recommending for these communities, and then we'll hear from one. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question?
I do, I'll wait till.
Okay, all right.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. I think what you've, what you heard from Emily was that the county wanted to reach out and help communities understand their housing markets better and how they might use county resources to address issues they found. And what you heard from Kristin is a very volatile housing market during this COVID time. We have home values appreciating, rents appreciating, wages not keeping up, and not enough housing on the market. And so communities that we're working with, they are all facing some version of that equation and trying to figure out in their communities, what are the things they need to accomplish and what are the things that they need to do? Our intent was to be realistic with communities, to understand what they could do and what kinds of resources the county had that might help them along the way. And so what I'm going to share is, while communities are different and the versions of implementing these things are different, there were some common themes, and there were some things that felt like they would be, that they would be helpful in a number of communities. And maybe one other thing I will say, Emily talked about the stakeholder meetings that are happening. And I think one of the things that's timely about this is that what's happening on the ground in local communities really can help inform that and can help, help inform the, the larger regional conversation about what's going to work in community A and B. So a little bit of context. So you heard me coincidentally talk a couple of weeks ago at the SEDS presentation about underperforming real estate and redevelopment. And it's the same story for the housing market. We really are focused on helping local communities identify those obsolete or underperforming parcels that they have, their old, their old big box retail, their old business districts, their schools, their churches that are vacant. There are lots of opportunities in the county, even though we don't have huge swaths of undeveloped land. And so working with communities to identify those sites, and I can tell you that every one of the first five communities has identified sites, working with them on pre-development, on site acquisition, on any number of things that need to happen so that we can get sites up and running. What I would say here is that it's really important to think about housing as part of those redevelopment sites. And it does several things. It helps support small businesses, it helps support healthy business districts, but it also provides new housing options in suburban communities that don't want to break up blocks and blocks of single-family housing. There are sites in community that could provide new kinds of housing options for seniors, for millennials, for all kinds of folks who are willing to live a little bit more densely without sort of breaking up single-family neighborhoods and single-family block faces. We also talked very much in many communities, there isn't a community in, that we worked with, who didn't want to support their longtime residents who are homeowners, who may be struggling with building conditions and staying in houses. And so a dedicated loan program that helps people do that is really important, coupled with code enforcement. That's both a double-edged sword and a really important thing to accomplish. So code enforcement, that's coupled with a robust loan program for, loan or grant program for homeowners in the community who can't take care of those expenses on their own is an important connection point. We talked also about critical infrastructure. I'm sorry that Mayor Mur is not here to join us today. One of the issues in Addison is that there are really great redevelopment sites in Addison with lovely views of the river, with streets that need to be reconstructed and with water systems that need to be reconstructed. So they understand that there are a couple of steps before they get to new housing on a site. Zoning. Am I clicking? I'm clicking. I want, zoning has been a big conversation, and we have talked for good and ill about density. I think density looks different in suburban communities, and I think there is room for all kinds of new housing options in communities in the county without breaking up single-family block faces. I'm talking about accessory dwelling units. I'm talking about two- and three-family housing that's already in all these communities, small multifamilies that are already in all of these communities. I think in years past, we have often thought about those, those kinds of housing types as obsolete, something to be demolished. I think those are important ads in communities. It's absolutely appropriate to expect those kinds of housing types to be up to a standard and to look good. But we've encouraged in a lot of places, communities who might have thought of those as obsolete building types to think about reinvestment and encouraging ways to reinvest in those project types. Also to support housing options, again, in targeted redevelopment sites, and to think about how to proactively zone so that every time you go through a project development, there isn't a huge battle. If communities can be proactively zoning, that helps move projects along more quickly. And finally, to think about affordable housing as, in the zoning process. So for, for example, granting density bonuses, maybe some of those density bonuses are tied to affordability. There are ways to connect those dots. And I talked about code enforcement. I'm going to stop here just because I know it's not a very exciting thing to talk about. But there are all kinds of supports that the county can provide to smaller jurisdictions around technology, around compliance, around bundling, cases where we have, as, as Kristin indicated, a REIT that may have dozens and dozens of, of problem properties in five jurisdictions. Any individual jurisdiction might have a hard time getting a hold of them if they have two problems. But when, when we say, no, there's 15 problems in these five communities, now you have to pay attention. And we hope that that'll improve compliance on improvements. And I'm clicking. So what I'm, what I'm sharing is sort of a set of overarching themes that have come out of each of these communities. Each of them looks a little bit different, whether it's, whether it's Cheviot or Addison or Deer Park or even Silverton. Next-door neighbors have different issues. But there, I think these kinds of supports from a county, given what you're going to be able to set aside, both from an administrative support standpoint and from a funding standpoint, will make a big difference. And maybe before I do my last slide, I want to give a shout out to the Planning and Development Staff. We worked, it's a pleasure to be in the county because we're working as a team with Planning and Development Staff and with Community Development Staff. And I think that makes, certainly makes our lives much easier because they know a lot about the community. So jurisdictions, and I'm not going to talk a lot more because Mayor Smith and Tom Carroll are going to come up and talk about what each jurisdiction might do with this, might do with these findings. The intent is that, that it was an opportunity for them to think a little bit more critically about what their next steps might be, and then to think about what kinds of funding they wanted to, to apply for and what kinds of sources of funding made sense for them, and how they might connect with other partners like developers, like the Port, like Ready, other resources in the community. And finally, to create some models where we're going to have some success encouraging more black homeownership and more wealth creation in black households. So that's where we were, and I think, I'm clicking. I'm going to ask Mayor Smith and Manager Carroll to come to the fore.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the invitation. Letting us be here today. This year, Silverton Council implemented a new program to assist our homeowners. Those that want to, those residents that want to stay in their properties, but do not have enough financial support to assist them. We've implemented a program that helping us to find the resources for those homeowners in, in the, in the city of Silverton, Ohio. We're looking for, we're looking for resources. We have been successful thus far in implementing one piece of, piece of property where the homeowners were given permission to stay in their property. They didn't want to leave. They needed financial assistance. And I'm glad to stand here today and say, as of this, this minute right here, we've been successful in doing a lot of things. And we're working diligently to help homeowners stay in Silverton, Ohio. At this time, Silverton's manager, Mr. Carroll, is going to give us some more in-depth information concerning this program. And again, thank you for the invitation. City of Silverton, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Tom Carroll, Silverton's finest manager.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, for that. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you to the commission for funding this important study in Silverton and the other four jurisdictions. And I commend you and the Planning and Development Staff for doing this again. I think the impetus to do this stems from about three or four studies that all pointed to the same picture. About two or three years ago, Community Building Institute looked at the barriers to fair housing and came up with some interesting findings that we still have a lot of work to do. LISC did the Housing Our Futures that said we have a 40,000-unit deficit of affordable housing in our county, which is a staggering number. There was research done for ICMA that looked at the challenges within the inner-ring suburbs in our communities and pointed that many communities are losing its tax, losing their tax base as one of the key signs of economic challenge. And so many of these inner-ring suburbs, the primary tax base is our housing stock. And so if we're losing our tax base, those communities are going to be more challenged to meet the needs for the residents. And we need to focus in on housing as a source both of individual family wealth as well as community tax base. And then the chamber recently did their study, which was excellent, and I commend them for that great work. So a couple of things that struck us from our housing study that was just completed, and I wanted to draw your attention to one fact from, from the study. In 2000, the village of Silverton had a 62% black homeownership rate. 62% of our residents who are black were homeowners. 19 years later, that number's only 43%. So Silverton has been successfully integrated for 50 years. We're very proud of that. That is part of our community culture and character. But it's staggering to me that in a generation, we have gone from having about one out of, two out of every three black residents being homeowners to one, to four out of every 10. There's a variety of reasons for that, and I want to get into the data more specifically with, with staff and LISC and Liz from CBI. But there's two things that I think we can point to that we know are part of that. Number one, the, the recession disproportionately hit communities of color, including black families in places like Silverton. And then we're seeing a generational turnover in communities like Silverton where historically, black families are selling their houses, and as the housing prices have gone up, there are disproportionately white, younger professional buyers coming to places like Silverton. So we are seeing what, what is the early signs of a significant shift in the demographics and integration of our communities in places like Silverton. And we want to be intentional about that. As Mayor Smith and Council have been very successful at having some revitalization in Silverton, we also recognize that one measure of that success, increased property values, increased home values, means that we are not accessible for all residents in the way that we want to be. So we have to have counterpolicies that make sure that we are. And that's why it's so important that we focus in on affordable housing and workforce housing in places like Silverton. And I just want to draw the county commissioners' attention to a statistic from the Housing Our Futures study. If the county has a 40,000-unit deficit in affordable housing, that means we need about one affordable housing unit for every 20 residents in the county. And this is how I simply think about things. So if Silverton has, we'll round up to 5,000. The census showed we don't have quite 5,000, but we'll round up to make the math easier for me. If we need to provide one affordable housing unit for every 20 residents, Silverton needs to create 250 affordable housing units in our community for us as a, as one of 49 jurisdictions to provide our fair share of affordable housing units. As of last year, we had zero planned. So we have a policy gap that we need to address. And so that has led us to start to look at where can we create affordable housing? Where can we do transit-oriented housing? How can we adjust our zoning? And this is the blueprint. And so we thank you so much for providing us this blueprint. And we think it's important from a policy perspective that we work with the county commissioners to encourage all the local governments in our county to begin to come up with policy plans that will have them, each jurisdiction, figure out how it gets its one unit for every 20 residents that it has. And you will have resistance from jurisdictions from that. That is not necessarily in the interest of some of those communities because that would be new. But the research also shows that there has been a suburbanization of poverty. So the, it is no longer the case that people below the poverty line reside only in the central cities in America. At this point in U.S. history, there are now more people below the poverty line in suburbia than there are in our country's central cities. So it's not, no longer we have to resist, if we build affordable housing, they will come and we don't want them to come. It's, we now have people in our communities in suburbia, in our inner ring, that need affordable housing. And so it's incumbent upon us as local governments to change our policy positions. I'll close and then answer any questions that you may have for Silverton or turn it over to the other presenters by simply echoing something that Mayor Smith talked about, our Homeowner Helper Program. This is something that we, we're trying to pilot and we think could be beneficial in other jurisdictions throughout the county. Would like to develop the best practices, hopefully by getting it right out of the gate. But if not, then others can learn from them, our mistakes. But we had a, a couple in their 70s who've been in this house for 70, for, for 15 years, and it's falling apart. And we invested $25,000 to fix up the roof and the gutters and the siding and paint the house because it was an eyesore. And we had written code enforcement orders against them, and they couldn't comply with them because they simply lacked the ability to pay for it. They don't have the money. There's no amount of enforcement that we can take that would lead them to comply. And so the village created this program, Mayor Smith and Council created this program, where effectively, we pay the contractor to bring their house into compliance. Their house is in compliance. The contractor gets paid. We pay for, for this investment, we, the village. And then we secure that investment by placing a lien, not an assessment, but a lien on the property so that it is essentially going to be recovered whenever that home transfers to the, to the heirs or whenever they sell it. So we are essentially providing these residents a 0% loan out of Silverton General Tax Fund revenues in order to keep them in their home and bring about compliance. But it's a transformational investment for the, this family and for the neighborhood. We would like to see if the county could continue and enhance a program like that for Silverton and other jurisdictions. And we could do something like that on a broader basis. We are essentially, by doing so, betting on the continued rise in property values in Silverton that that home, that asset will be worth more so that whenever it transfers, we will get our money back. And so that's, that's an example of one of the programs that I think Liz and Emily and Kristin were talking about. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. You had a question, and we'll open it up for questions. We had several speakers. So, thank you all for your presentation. I have a few comments also, but Vice President Reese, you had some, no? No, you can go in, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to thank the presenters today and many of you I've worked with in several different capacities over the years, whether at that city council or at the State House and now at the county. And I think we all share in the frustration that here we are still stuck in this situation that has lack of housing opportunity and diversity of housing product that covers the range, that mirrors the range of the economic issues that our communities face. I want to start by saying that I'm one of those people who can't really afford to live in the city of Cincinnati and have been looking and looking and looking, but also, we have the challenge of there are millennials, many who cannot afford or don't want to own. So, we do have to have diverse housing opportunities because I'm understanding that it's rising among millennials if we're talking about the future, and they want to rent. Someone want to rent. They want to live in these nice places downtown and other places and have the rooftop pools and kind of have that type of lifestyle, and they should be allowed to do that. There are baby boomers who are selling their homes and are moving into the different communities, and they, they don't want to deal with plumbing and cutting the grass and those kind of things, and we should have those opportunities as well. But then there's people who do want to own, and we should have that as well. So, I wanted to start the, the discussion with, with that. We have had a lot of studies, and I am, and, and that's great. We had a lot of studies. We had, I think Liz, you were, this is two weeks in a row maybe, I don't know. You'll be sitting, sitting over here after a while because you're here, you know, every week with trying to help us with this. I want to, one, ask the administrator, how do these studies fit into, because what I want is one map that's interactive, that deals with all of our housing stock, that when we make a decision, whether it's a CRA or TIF or CDBG dollars over here, how does that affect maybe housing over there? I want to see it because certainly gentrification is issue, but there's also unintended gentrification. It's not always on purpose, you know, because you vote for this project but don't really know it sounds great, it's a great idea, but you don't know that you are pricing people out. Or if you go for a certain project, once you put that sign up, and this is what I've been saying, you put that sign up, say the port authority bought this, investors start buying behind it. So, I want to look at it holistically. Yeah, you bought this project, but what about all these houses that sit behind it? And let's make sure that they don't get priced out of the market for rental. So, I wanted to ask the administrator, I know that our board has asked for a, one major map, and since I've been here, we've had three or four presentations of this study, two or three communities, this study, two or three municipalities, over here's where a study. I know that we-
I'm going to interject. If our interim administrator could come up to the podium as she's addressing the department, that would be great.
Yeah, I was going to ask our administrator here because we voted on, I think we voted on something that, and I just want to know, is this what we, is this something different or?
Well, I think it's, it's definitely interrelated. So, yeah, the Commission had talked about doing, wanting to get a visual perspective of all the different economic development, affordable housing projects in the county and having an interactive mapping approach to that, and we're working on that through cages. So, it's not completed yet. I can work on a timeline for that for you, but that's how we are approaching that is through cages, so it is interactive for the board, so you can see all the different projects that are occurring and have that in a more readily usable form. So, I think that's what you were asking for is-
Yeah, maybe a step further. I've misunderstood. I think, Madam President, we were, you know, we, we're hiring people to kind of pull all these things together. I thought what we were going to be getting, we're putting $40 million into housing, and I know we've got the Ernst &amp; Young and they're going to have a present. I need one thing that has, this is some great data. This data, somebody else's data, whoever data, bring all of it in, not cages, not after it's done, but let's look at what does Hamilton County really look like? We talked about a 40,000-unit deficit. For me, and it may help other board members, for me, it helps me to see, I need one roadmap for housing in Hamilton County, and then everybody kind of fall in. Everybody we, everybody that we fund falls into this to help us begin to check these things off. Otherwise, we're going to continue to have the piecemeal approach, which is not working for us, and I just want to make sure. We had some good information, I think a week ago or two weeks ago, Liz, that you all presented through planning and development, then we've got the Chamber, they got something, and some, you know, affordable housing is the, is the, is the title of the day. Some of us, some of you all that's been here have been in it for a long time, but everybody's coming to the game under the word affordable. So, I'm saying before we do the 40 million or 35 million, it would be helpful, everything that we're funding, all of the municipalities, and putting those into one area, I think would be very helpful for us as we talk about moving forward. I want to be able to put my hands on something to show that we actually have made a difference a year later. Here's what we've done to impact this, and next year, what we've done to impact. And I don't think we can get there if I got a, I got 15, 25 studies, and maybe they don't all come to our county, but they are sent to us, different groups are doing this study, that study. So, we know like this is where we're going, and then everybody kind of, here's where you fit in. And then people like our Mayor Smith and, and our Manager Carol, who has brought a very innovative idea forward, we can kind of check off what we have done. So, I wanted to know that, and I also wanted to know, we've got $5 million that we are supposed to have out in the streets in October, I think we're in October. I want to know when that is, while we have the mayor here and the manager here, because like you said, people in their homes are, we want to help them keep the ones they got before we start getting some new ones. So, maybe we have a timeline for that? Is that getting ready to be announced?
Yeah, so the, I think you're referring to the Mortgage Assistance Program, Commissioners? So, the Mortgage Assistance Program, I think is the 22nd or the 26th? Holly, which one is?
22nd.
22nd, October 22nd is when we're shooting to release that program.
Great. So, I wanted the mayor and the manager to know that October 22nd, we will have funding available, $5 million, to help stabilize the people who already own homes and have issues forward. I had some questions about this. So, I had a question about the overall plan. I'd like to get more information, when we're going to have it, how it's going to be done for the 35 million that we're going to be doing, because we could leverage that based on some other things to be able to have that. My question to maybe anyone who testified from LISC or, I don't know if Liz or, or planning, we use the word affordable housing. Now, affordable means a lot of different things to a lot of people. Should we include the word workforce housing? Because basically, we've got people who work every day. A lot of times affordable, we go with the federal guideline, you almost got to be destitute to get something, and I know it brings in the homeless, and we certainly support that. But what about the people that work every day, two jobs, or a teacher, or someone who cannot necessarily afford a house? So, should we put workforce, have you looked into that?
So, you know, one thing I would mention is that, so a lot of this, I think, and Commissioner Reese, which you're getting at too, is a lot of this is about public perception, right? And people's understanding of what we're talking about when we're talking about affordable housing. And so, what, you know, we, we talk about workforce, workforce housing, for people who aren't maybe as familiar, those, that's folks that are probably making around 80% of our area median income, so you know, just under $50,000. We, we also, I think, there's some conversation about using that phrase because it might suggest that folks who are earning less than that are not working, and we know that many of our very lowest, you know, income folks are indeed working, right? They're making $9 an hour. So, I think there's a little bit of a sort of a stigma that we want to be careful about when we're speaking about workforce housing, but you're absolutely right, that we have to talk about, we, we have to group things together, right? Because there are resources, federal resources in particular, that are available to folks in the very lowest band, 0 to 30% area median income. And then as we grow, go up, there's less federal resource, which means we have to figure out local resources to help provide those housing options to folks that are starting out working as a firefighter or a, you know, a medical assistant or, you know, some of these really important jobs that we know we have available in our community right now that we need to fill and we need to retain. How do we make sure those folks have housing as well? It's important, the strategies are just a little different for the different income ranges when you're figuring out the capital stack or the financing tools that are available. But yes, absolutely, we need to attend to that group very much so.
So, will workforce housing be more? What is workforce housing? You said it's a stigma.
Workforce housing typically, we typically, we talk about workforce housing as 80, 60 to 80% area income, median income, and sometimes up to 120, depending on, so it's sort of a broader brush than, than just when we talk about very low-income housing, which is for people making 0 to 30% area median income. So, what I was saying about the stigma was just that I think we want to be careful not to suggest that people making less than 60% of the area median income aren't work, work in the workforce as well, because many of them are, they're just not at that income range yet. That's the main sort of-
Gotcha.
-piece that I think we, we try to think about when we're describing the different tiers of housing needs.
Gotcha. The reason I say that is because there has never been help for people that's, it's a long medium. If you're very poor, we always got, you know, we've always had something.
Yep.
And what we learned in this COVID, it's the first time, is that, you know, there's people out here who, there's no help.
That's right.
They say you make too much to go to the hospital. You make too much to get help with your gas and electric. You make too much, so it's this group of people paying high of everything. If you're super rich, you got an accountant, they're figuring out how you don't have to pay. This group in here is paying all the taxes, they're paying all the bills, there's no payment program for them, there's nobody to help them with, you know, their needs. And COVID allowed us to have some flexibility, and we're even seeing this. People come out to get help, they're not the same people. So, I do want to, I'd love to get some more information about workforce housing because we are pricing those people. You shouldn't be a teacher and can't afford to live where you teach, or you shouldn't be a nurse and you can help save our lives, but you can't afford to live in our communities. So, I want to make sure that when we do a, a study on the types of housing, and Tom and I, we talked about this, but the types of housing, there, that's where that, that issue is with the need. So, I do like to, I would like to get more information on workforce housing, and I would also like to see what the impact of loans, because even though there was a bank bailout, there became a holding, and so a lot of the issues of African-Americans and some others that was mentioned by Mr. Carroll and Liz and yourself, you know, there's things that impacted, and it's not just, oh, a black person couldn't afford a house, or, no, there's been redlining. There's been loans that have not been up to par or given to them. There's been insurance redlining, not being insure your house if you're in certain neighborhoods. And I'd like to see, and then of course, the pay and equity that is there, no matter what your college degree is, you know. So, if we could put those pieces in, I think would give us a real picture about, you know, some of the barriers and it coupled with what you're, what you're saying. So, anyway, those were some of my questions, and Madam President, I probably, you had asked about this before, if we got this, these slides in color. There was a slide on there that talks, that was a very important slide, talked about the 23% of all households in Hamilton County have an income of 25,000, and then it has the areas, but it's kind of hard to, hard to see, and I know you had requested that, and maybe we can get that in the future. That would be great.
Yeah, we'll make sure that happens, Jeff. You said huh? We were saying about it not being in color. Yeah, uh-huh, yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. It's, we talk about housing a lot lately because we've got an opportunity with the ARP funding to really do some transformational work in the county, unlike we've ever been done before. We've just never been in this space to this degree, and so it's just a very interesting time, and we're very desperate, I think, I speak for all three of us, to get it right, you know, to make transformational change with these dollars that are coming down from the federal government. So, I want to draw a distinction, and I don't know, I just want to do this so that I am clear on what we're talking about related to some of the surveys and the data that you've provided. So, in the county, our housing work gen-
Kind of interject, it's just hard to talk to an empty podium. So, can someone stand up and-
Well, I can't see anybody because of the poll anyway. Just talking to a poll.
You should be able to see.
How's that? Okay, sorry about that.
I, I can't. I can see Liz, that's about it. So, yeah, this poll is a disaster. Anyway, I can't see. So, we've got, as we have gone, the housing work that we've been able to do is through CDBG and through home, right? These are federal dollars, they flow to us, they're pretty limited, and then we are able to push those down into the jurisdictions to be helpful when it comes to housing. And so now, that, those two, those funds exist. In fact, we've had a little bit more go into those funds, so that's the good news, right? And we also have the American Rescue Plan dollars, and we've set aside collectively $40 million, 35 for the long-term, five for the short-term, to try to get to this housing piece. And so, as we think through some of the studies that are coming forward to us, I want to make sure, and I'm doing it in my own mind, that I can help myself distinguish ongoing programs like CDBG and home as opposed to the American Rescue Plan dollars, which are one-time dollars. And so, these studies then interplay with both, right? I mean, so the, I think the question for us as policymakers is, what are the long-term strategies with those very limited dollars coming down from the federal government that, you know, we need to pay attention to as those get dispersed? But that juxtaposed to these one-time dollars that can be really important. And so, I heard that the panels went well, esp- I, I know the housing panel is like the biggest of all panels because so many stakeholders are sitting at the table, so many experts are at the table, which I frankly think is a good thing. It might be unwieldy for the consultants, but you know, that's the way it goes, because we've got so much interest in this. So, is it, is it, am I being clear in my own mind about, we got some long-term stuff, we've got some short-term stuff, and some of the recommendations really interplay with both?
Yes. Yes, I think that's critical because you're right, this, this is once-in-a-lifetime money, but it's only going to last so long. And so, I think that, I was in the panel last week and, around affordable housing, and I think that distinction is being made, I would say, in terms of how worth, how EY is framing the issue to us, and I think how we think about going forward, what are those tools that will be catalytic, right? I think that's going to be the key. These aren't going to be the solutions for 10 years from now necessarily, but how can those dollars be strategically invested in the short-term to build some key wins that we need in the region to bolster this issue? So, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, thank you. So, and to that point then, I've just got two, a little bit more in the weeds questions. We talk a lot about legacy homeowners and especially senior citizens on fixed incomes that are having trouble staying in their homes. For, for my view, for two, two reasons. One is there might be code violations, there might be repairs that need to be made, and then the other piece is the property tax piece, where property values go up in a community and the legacy homeowners, not only because of the increased property values, but also the value of their own home, in addition to some other things that, you know, impact property taxes. And how do we figure out a way to make sure that they have some stability in their homes? And I, I know Tom spoke about this, about a fund, I think it was Tom, maybe somebody else, about a fund to have in place so that we can assist those property owners. I didn't hear clearly where that fund comes from.
Do you want to say something? I'm looking back at the experts here.
I can't remember who said it. I think it was, yeah.
Here comes Emily.
So, the program that Tom was talking about, we do similar, smaller-scale programs with BlockRant, a project of that size. He's there, the village of Silverton has figured out a way to use general fund, and that's part of the reason, I think, for the, the lien to replenish that fund and to continue helping people. So, again, BlockRant is rather limited, so obviously, a larger pot of money would help more- So obviously, a larger pot of money would help more people. You know, we help a few of our communities choose to run their own programs with our block grant funds. So we help, you know, a few folks in those communities each year. But definitely on a larger scale, something to help more people in the community with different kinds of repairs. Some programs are very specific about what they'll do, but we get calls all the time, I believe the commissioners do as well, for different types of repairs that we just don't have the capacity right now for. So a larger-scale program is definitely, there's definitely a need out there for it.
So so to be clear, those are federal dollars that we're using through block grants?
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right. So I'm curious about that because I think that's a really important issue that's been raised. And then the property tax issue, we've, we've talked, and all three of us sit on the land bank board, and we've talked at at that board about if if we're going into communities and increasing property values, which is generally considered to be a good thing, but there are these downsides to it for legacy property owners, is there a way to freeze the property tax increase for a legacy homeowner in a community like that where we see rising property values? So I'm just throwing that out there. I know Greater Ohio was working on this. I don't know how far along that is, but it's something I think that we've talked about in the past, and it's another tool we can use to try to create some stability for these homeowners.
Yes. So Greater Ohio has passed the torch to sort of a coalition, and Mo Ablon from Cincinnati Development Fund and myself are representing sort of the Cincinnati, Greater Cincinnati region on that group to talk about the homes, the tax exemption, you know, there's some state-level things that have to happen in order for for local municipalities to be able to make any of those changes. So we are working right now to find appropriate sponsor at the State House to potentially put, there's been some draft legislation prepared. So I'm cautiously optimistic that there are some things that might happen at the state level to help support. And I think we also can look at the homestead property tax exemption for seniors, right, and making sure that our seniors are accessing the tools that are available to them now, that we do have some authority and control over, or at least some ability to encourage people to connect. And I think we're going to have to get creative. Ultimately, you know, what Tom, excuse me, what Mr. Carroll is doing in Silverton is is a little out of the box. And I think we have to think about these kinds of things differently and figure out ways to leverage some private dollars, too, because we know that the county and the jurisdiction resources are so limited. How can we blend together public and private? There's some good models in other communities at a larger scale, but how do we right-size that for this market and for our jurisdictions to really help support homeowners, as you said, to stay in their homes, to be able to retain the value and make sure that they're able to pass that on when the time comes?
Can I ask one, one last question, also related kind of to this? So the other thing that has been top of mind is the housing court. And I just wanted to get a status report. The housing, we've got a housing docket in Hamilton County, which is fine. A housing court, however, would provide one judge that sees the property owners that you were just referring to on one of your slides, who have bought up so many properties in some of these neighborhoods, not to the betterment necessarily of the neighborhood. And without a housing court, we don't see trends because the housing docket is, you know, a judge gets it one week, and then a different judge gets it, and then a different judge gets it. And so those judges don't have, they don't see the trends that one judge would see if they did it day after day and could hold some of these folks more accountable. And the housing court also could provide this kind of fund that we were just talking about, right? If there were folks that already had code violations, then we could set aside a fund through the housing court. They know where they are and potentially help in that way. So what is this, you're grimacing, what is the status of the housing court? Is that no longer on the table?
So last week, the judges met, and they decided not to proceed forward with creating a housing court. And there are a lot of reasons why. I think, one, because this sits in criminal court. And so there are actually, one of the judges yesterday went out with a group from the Cincinnati Association, and they did a neighborhood tour. And one of my team members was on this tour. And they visited homes where folks received code violations, and it escalated to a level where they were then on house arrest. And so I think we have to really make sure that that tool is designed and seated in the way that makes sense to actually address the needs, you know. We need to think about how that actually gets created. And I think that was the judge's caution. Also, they've, I think, indicated that funding is going to be necessary, right? We can't, as you just said, Commissioner, we can't build this without having resources available to support the action that's required of homeowners when they are engaged in housing court. So I think there's a, going to be a bit of a reimagining of this. I think that the initial proposal, as, as I understand it, is sort of, is, has been declined. So I think there's going to be a revisit. I think we all know we need the tools to work in harmony to really help make sure that the folks that need resources are getting them, and the folks that are bad actors are being held accountable. And I think that the housing court was, by some, some folks' view, the way it was designed was going to actually have some of these unintended consequences that we've talked about that we want to really try to avoid. So I would say there's more to come. And I'm not the spokesperson or the expert on this in any way. So I just, this is what I understand from what's been described so far.
Yeah, and none of us want the unintended consequences, but I think the fund would maybe help alleviate some of those unintended consequences, and yet hold some of the bad actors feet to the fire. So, okay, so I will keep my ear to the ground on the housing court. More to come. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. I wrote notes all over. I can't read them now. But you guys said such great stuff. But you talk about the judges in the housing court. Just wondering what their thinking is because they still don't understand this eviction court process either, the judges. So it's like, they seem to not understand housing and the significant, and significance of housing, and people need a place to stay. And so I'm not going to get into the judges, but I'm just not really understanding where they're coming from. Just a couple comments. I know when Tom came up and the mayor came up, they were, I guess indirectly, just asking if the county can help in addition through some funding for that great program that they're, they're doing and planning on doing. But when Tom was talking about that there were sixty-two percent black homeowners, and now there's forty-three percent, is not really surprising to me because there's been a lot of economic development. And he indicated that, I mean, I thought about going to Silverton when I was moving, and there are some really expensive apartments and homes, even more so than ever. So of course, that would drive out some people who are not able to to pay as the rent goes up in other areas. It was mentioned early about the five-point-four million in addition to home funds through the American Rescue Plan, that certainly we're looking at now strategically whether or not we can use that for affordable housing. I wanted to ask Emily something, and then I'm going to just do a general comment. And Emily, we said we had opened up applications that that are due, thank you, October the twenty-second. Now, is our plan to, after that deadline, to go to additional CDBG partners to have another application process?
So the first round was for five, this is for seven. So that'll take roughly a year to complete all of those.
Okay.
So then if they're, you know, I'm assuming they'll continue to be as successful as they have so far. And if we see a need, then we will definitely go out for another, another round for this.
Okay. And I think it would be a good carrot to to put over some of the villages and municipalities who have decided they don't want to be a part of the CDBG program. It's really a benefit to them, and that's a great benefit that they could get, that they probably would have to pay much more for. And just in general, you talked about the cost burden people, and the numbers were so high. And it's just, this is bigger than all of us, but I'm thinking about all the banks and lenders that give housing to people who can't afford it. It's like seventy-three percent are cost burden. They can't afford it. They put them in a position where they get a home, or they get an apartment, and within the year, they lose their home. And then they default. And then when they really try to get a place to stay when they can't afford it, then look at their records. So when I say it's bigger than us, these bankers and lenders, even real estate people are not supposed to pay the down payment if you can't afford it. So it's a, it's a big issue where they're, they're getting their temporary money from these people for a year, year and a half, and then they lose their home because they couldn't afford it in the first place. So I want you to solve that for me.
Okay. I'm on it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. But I can't, I can't find the percentage. But that is just really sad of what's going on. So that was all that I had. Was there any additional?
Sure.
I wanted to ask about the idea of community land trusts. I'm looking into that. I'm trying to see some other ways we can do things. Has that come up, or can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So we do have one land trust in West End that is still in existence that that is being managed by Seven Hills Neighborhood House now, or is affiliated with the neighborhood house. And it's something we definitely have been talking a lot about in terms of a best practice or a way to create and protect, you know, rising property values in communities. We've been talking with a group that's testing a model called a, that's testing a model in, outside of Kansas City that's really interesting, that is a similar approach, and it's community-managed, community-owned, so really residents benefit. And then Silverton is also exploring some different sort of community ownership opportunity models potentially to understand sort of how do we, there's, you know, how do we make sure that property is staying under resident control and is, and that residents are benefiting from the investments and the changes happening? So yes, it just requires all of these items, and you all know this well, these are all very expensive. You know, there's no, even ten, twenty, thirty, fifty, a hundred million dollars is not going to necessarily get us where we need to go. It's, we have, but we have to start. And so we have to be able to resource organizations to to manage the land trusts, to be able to, you know, do the work that it requires. And so that's another challenge in the county, is that we just don't have as many community development entities or organizations that work in these jurisdictions the way that we do inside the city of Cincinnati. So we have to build some of those muscles in the county, I think, to be able to support some of these kinds of concepts and investment opportunities and community benefiting opportunities to be able to do that. But yes, absolutely, land trusts, and we can provide some resources if anyone's interested in learning more.
Yeah, I want to learn more. I, I was on a statewide realist homeownership conference. And I understand Columbus is looking, has been doing land trust. And if, and I don't know all the ins and outs, but just from the short, for those who are watching, the community almost, instead of the land bank, we do the land bank course, the land bank is a board of, we're on the board, but we're not just, you know, we're on the board. But it's ran by the Port Authority. We pay them to run it. But community land trust, I was very interested in because it really seemed to work in urban areas better, where the community owns that land, and if somebody leaves, they still own that land. So they will work in some of these areas, maybe Silverton, maybe Lincoln Heights or Chevy, they own the land. So I am very interested in that model, what that model takes, and if there is some creative things that we can do as it relates to that model, I think it would be worth us exploring in in-depth way so that even people that are watching at home can look into it. But that's one of the things. I do want to just piggyback on Commissioner Drew House. That's one of the big issues. We're on the COVID-nineteen Economic Recovery Task Force that I'm leading. One of the things we talked about is the taxes. We've been waiting to get information back. We understand that the state, and even though we have the homestead program, it does reduce where the senior has to apply every single year. I mean, if I'm eighty, I'll be eighty-one next year. I'm not getting, you know, my numbers aren't going down. They're going up. So they have to always reapply. It's very difficult. I do agree, and I just want to be on record, on your analysis or explanation of the, of the housing court. It sounds very good. But again, if you use it wrong, you got the wrong people. We see, we've seen that firsthand a couple years ago, not too many years ago. I think it was Reverend Mingo, who had a pastor in the community, he was out, he's on the streets trying to reduce the violence, and he working with the city, and he's okay to be out in the streets to reduce the violence. So while he's out there reducing violence, codes, which I'm very concerned with, who does zoning, who does code enforcement, because one of the things that happened is that, and I've gotten this from a lot of people who who probably would testify to this, they get a call about buying their property from I, a buyer, Port Authority. And then if they say no, it ain't forty-eight hours later, here come the building inspector. So they kind of like working together. And they, and it's always an area that we say we want to redevelop. You always can put a pinpoint. Your house was good enough, as long as it hadn't been discovered. And now that it's discovered in a neighborhood, here come the building inspector, then the zoning people, they agree. And then they go get the community council, which of course you want to say, do you want your community looking beautiful? Of course I do. But then, if it's enforced wrong, Reverend Mingo was out fighting crime, trying to help us in the city. And then I remember, I think the mayor had to run to the court. He was out of breath because they're getting ready to put Mingo in jail, Reverend Mingo in jail, because he couldn't afford to fix some, a wall on his property. So he had a zoning issue with a building inspector, and then here come the courts. So we don't want that, especially now with COVID. People don't have no extra money to fix nothing up. They trying to hold on. You could go down to the treasurer and see that they trying to hold on. You can hear the complaints they got about their assessments going up. They, we'll have more senior citizens, and then it's subjective. Well, we gonna let these people go, but these people, you going to jail, or you getting an ankle bracelet, like you said. So the timing is not right, and we haven't fixed the housing problem. So I am very interested in seeing what kind of revolving fund we could put together with a public-private, like we did with CDF, maybe a public-private, we put some money in, the money continues, and now we have these dollars available. To the planning group, I'd like to see if we have additional funds. Last time, we had some additional funds, so we was able to put a six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant available to small municipalities, which resulted in Chiviot and Deer Park and Lincoln Heights getting some money for Wi-Fi. Do we have any extra money left over from CAREs, COVID, wherever, whatever fund is available, that we could maybe put a grant out there, or at least we could look at a grant that could be put out there to duplicate the model that Silverton has, and maybe duplicated in other areas? I know it's a short-term fix, but at least we can stabilize until we have a chance to get a overall plan. And maybe we can present to our board, and we can decide if we want to do it. But I'd like to know if we got money available to put something like that together, to duplicate what Silverton is doing, because it's, it's very new. So I don't know if that's available to us, or if we could put, if there's a grant available. I know when Joy was here, she would, she had all kinds of wide ways to put stuff together.
We, as I mentioned before, we do have a limited pot of money for, pot of CDBG funding for home repairs. So we could do something like a pilot program, you know, start a program and test it out. Like I, we, there's, even though, as Commissioner Drew House mentioned, our block grant does keep growing, it's dedicated to a lot of other things. So that would be something that, you know, in our 2022 action plan, which will be coming before the board this winter, that you all will have the opportunity to, you know, kind of work on and discuss. I think Tom wanted to talk about something along those lines as well.
Just real quick to follow up to that question, Commissioner. So we had worked with Emily, who was very gracious in helping us try and figure out this homeowner helper program that I referenced earlier, using federal funds. The final analysis that we reached is, for us to use federal funds would require some additional administration. And each one of these projects is in the five to ten to twenty-five-thousand-dollar range. So there's a great deal of administrative time and investment for relatively small projects. And so the federal funds make it difficult to maximize and scale it. So that's why Silverton came to the conclusion, we need to put local general fund dollars into this program, which we manage them legally, of course, but they don't come with the federal reporting requirements and obligations. So, so it's difficult to use ARP money or CAREs money if there were any available, and I don't know that there were. But it's difficult to use federal funds in this way, in our experience.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know, because I, I was thinking, I'd rather do that than a study. I'm not the big, I'm not a big, I'm not, sorry, I'm not a big study. I don't like to studies all day. But yeah, I, I thank you for that, and looking forward to more of the meat on the bones for the action plan that we could start to try to implement. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm sure whatever monies we have available, our administration will take a good look, because we don't want to leave any monies on the, on the table. And also, it's a priority of the board as it relates to housing. So we certainly will, will look into that. I had one other comment. Liz had brought up about code enforcement and the importance of it. And I think it's time to have our shared services conference. Again, we mentioned that the last time, but a shared Again, we mentioned that the last time, but a shared service conference will be so helpful to so many municipalities and villages. I remember when I was in Lincoln Heights, we did not have a tow truck, what do you call the thing that picks up the salt?
Oh, a salt, a sub truck.
Not the plow, he was telling me. But anyway, what'd you say, Quentin?
Salt truck.
Well, no, the thing, not the, well, anyway, the thing that picks up the salt. It was very small. And so Woodline helped us, Forest Park helped us, Springdale helped us to get all of that up, so we could go on the streets. So I, I know that it's been brought up before, that shared services is the way to go, and people are afraid to ask, they want to do their own thing. So I think it's about time for us to, to have another one, so.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I could, just very briefly, just wanted to put a couple things in context, especially for folks who may be watching at home. Just recognizing as, listening to the discussion, that I would say maybe as soon as, or as recent as five years ago, affordable housing wasn't even a topic in, in the county. We were not even talking about this subject five years ago. That has obviously changed significantly, due in large part to a lot of folks who are in the room presenting today. I did just want to note a couple of things, again, for folks watching at home, in terms of some things that the county is doing in this area right now. First and foremost, I do want to just, I did note that as Mr. Carroll was talking about the different studies that had been done, the chamber, et cetera, Tom, very, very humbly just referred to the ICMA study that was done. Tom, I did note that. I think it was Dr. Carroll who did that study. So, so I just wanted to thank you for your efforts in that regard. But a couple of things, just that the county is doing, again, just very recently, since, again, five years ago, this wasn't even a conversation. But number one is most of our home dollars, as the board knows, now directed towards directly funding the production of additional affordable housing in the county. We've been doing that now, probably since maybe 2016, I would say. Emily, in our general fund, the board budgeted $1 million last year for affordable housing. We wound up using those dollars this year during COVID, when we started seeing all the cost increases in the construction market, and we used those dollars to help pay for gap financing, to complete various affordable housing projects, which were stalling because of those cost increases. As Commissioner Dreehouse and Emily mentioned, we do, through our CDBG programs, help, help residential homeowners with small projects like heating repairs, cooling repairs, et cetera, so that they can stay in their homes, that we preserve their ability to remain in housing that is affordable for them. We do still operate in some regard, although it's probably time that we take another look at this, the, the Home Improvement Loan Program, or HIP, which years ago was a very effective loan program for, for home, home repairs, because the rate that you could get on that loan was much, was much more cost-effective than what you get commercially. In the interest rate environment that we're in right now, that's not as much the case. So it's probably time to take a harder look at that at this point. Planning and zoning is, is moving forward with a model zoning code, which will take a look at one element of that model zoning code, some of the things that have come out of the, the reports and the studies relating to what, what zoning can do to help promote affordable housing and workforce housing in some of our communities. And then finally, and there's more, but leading up to the topic more of the day, and that is the American Rescue Plan dollars, where the board did allocate $40 million for affordable housing. A portion of that, around $10 million, is for preservation and maintenance, to look at how we can leverage those dollars to make sure that people stay in their homes and that we keep the stock of affordable housing that we have. That study, or that, that process is designed to be very solution-focused. So as we kind of referenced in today's session, we have 20 or so of what I would call the top experts in affordable housing in a room, talking about, to Commissioner Reese's point, not a, a plan, but, but recommendations to come back to the board on how to allocate those dollars strategically, to make sure that we are doing, using these dollars, that we're going to get one time in our collective lives, to use those in a way to be as transformative as we possibly can to move the needle on this critical issue in the community. The folks who presented today are in, in that room. I heard CDF reference, CDF is in that, in that room. So we've got the right players in, in the room, and I hope by the end of this year, we're bringing back some draft recommendations to the board that help us take a step further in, in this journey towards solving what we all know is a pressing problem in the community. So thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to lend some context to some of the things that the county is doing immediately on this issue.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I'm so glad you brought up about the HIP program, the Housing Improvement Program, because if we did a, a survey, I mean, we might want to do that before we get involved, if we get involved as a county. Most of the municipalities have stopped theirs. They were doing it, I know Forest Park had it, they don't have it anymore. So the areas that were helping out people were not able to afford it. So that's a, that's a great idea for the county to take a, a look at that. Okay. Were you ready to say something?
Probably back to you, back there.
Yeah. No, I didn't know if you wanted to comment on Jeff, whether he had.
Oh, just overall.
Okay, so we'll, we'll open it up. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. And so Dr. Carroll has a passion also for Lincoln Heights. He's working with the village manager there to try to provide some improvement in, in the housing area and the taxes in that area. And I certainly appreciate, I'm sure the board does, and the people of Lincoln Heights. Thank you, doctor. Okay. So we're going to move right along, and that's the last thing on our agenda, but I'll open it up for any of my colleagues who may have some final comments. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. And I do want to also recognize Dr. Carroll, like you said, the work he's doing, not just Silverton, but Lincoln Heights, but also the first suburbs. I think was, was very important. Suburbs are dealing with a lot of issues that they hadn't dealt with before, and don't have enough resources. So I do appreciate that, and appreciate all that, all those who came and testified and presented to us today. Just wanted to, and I want to thank Jeff for the, the list of things that he listed that we are doing in things to come. I'm very glad, I want to make sure people understand, for those homeowners, that $5 million will be ready to go, October 23rd. Is that the date? October 23rd? Huh? 22nd, October 22nd, homeowners, we are on the way. And that, those will be able to help you with your mortgage, and be able to help you with, if you have gas and electric and water bill, you'll be able to qualify for that. So stay tuned. Madam President, I just want to end with something. You, one of the things you highlight with us, our commission board, with yourself and Commissioner Dreehouse and myself, is we announce a lot of new things, and a lot of new things that we're doing. And I know that we are a county that is aging, but we're also wanting the next generation to come and stay here. And so I'm encouraging them to watch our meetings and get involved, because this is also their county. And so with that, I do want to end with a, a little quote that gave me some energy from DJ Khaled. And I think it highlights some things that we're doing here after COVID. DJ Khaled said, "It's a new world, new technology, new science, new opportunities, new direction, new challenges, and new ideas." And so as we go into this budget, and it just got me excited, because, you know, I come from the hip-hop generation, and I got excited about it, because as we're going into this budget, this will be my first budget, this is what I'm saying. It's a new world, it's new technology, it's new science out here, new opportunities, new direction, new ideas, new challenges. So we must continue to be bold. We must move quicker and faster, because the need is quick and fast, and we must continue to be innovative. So that's my, my ending for the day. It just gave me so much energy and so much excitement, and certainly those who are in the hip-hop world will appreciate that, from DJ Khaled. So if you don't get a motivational book, you got a little motivational today from him. But that's what I think our county should be moving in, and certainly looking forward to working with the administration as we go into our next budget.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
I have nothing further.
Thank you. At this point, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Samara Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.